Okay. The time is seven thirty-one, and this is the August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one work session of the Allen Dell Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone joining us tonight in person at Borough Hall. And we also live streaming our events via Zoom webinar for those who prefer to watch elsewhere. We ask those present to please mute your devices at this time so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. And as always, there will be several opportunities for the public present to be heard, and we will invite you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the August twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-one sunshine notice was sent to the record, Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
Great, thank you, and please conduct the roll.
Councilwoman Homan here, Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sasso is absent, Councilman Strouch.
Don't have Councilman Strouch.
Count. Okay. Councilwoman Wolcinski.
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Here. Uh, next is the presentation of, a proclamation for, uh, should I wait? Is she coming in? There, there she is. Hello. Your, your, your timing is impeccable. Great. I was just about to begin with the proclamation. It's a special day for us. September is National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. In recognition of this, each year, the Allen Dell Women's Club ties teal ribbons around trees throughout the borough to help raise awareness and member, in memory of Linda Fleischauer, a member and dynamic person who bravely battled this disease. On behalf of our community, I thank them, and we thank them all for, for their efforts. And additionally, I have a proclamation that I'm going to be reading declaring September as ovarian cancer awareness month in the borough of Allen Dell. So, without further ado, I will read and Marie Caliendo we have here to accept the proclamation. I'll read it, and then we can all, you can come up, and if anyone wants to join me for, with Marie for a picture, that would be great. Proclamation in honor of National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas ovarian cancer continues to have one of the highest mortality rates of any cancer and is a leasing, leading cause of cancer deaths among women in the United States. And whereas each September especially, we remember the mothers, sisters, and daughters we have lost to ovarian cancer, and we extend our support to those living with this disease. And whereas each year, thousands of women are diagnosed with and go on to battle valiantly against this disease. Yet ovarian cancer remains difficult to detect, and women are often not diagnosed until the disease has reached an advanced stage. Because early detection is the best defense against ovarian cancer, it is essential that women know the risk factors associated with the disease. Whereas during National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month and throughout the year, we commend all of the brave women fighting this disease and recognize their families and friends compassion and encouragement. And in memory of all the brave women who have lost their lives to ovarian cancer and in support of generations of women to come, let us recommit to reaching a safer, healthier future for all our citizens. And whereas the Allen Dell Women's Club will be placing teal ribbons around trees throughout the borough of Allen Dell as part of the turn the t- the town's teal, a campaign to raise awareness of ovarian cancer in memory of Linda Fleischauer, a member and dynamic person who bravely battled this disease. Now, therefore, I, Ari Bernstein, on behalf of the mayor and council of the borough of Allen Dell, do hereby proclaim September twenty-twenty-one as National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in the borough of Allen Dell, and thank the Allen Dell Women's Club for all their efforts to raise awareness of this disease. I call upon citizens, government agencies, organizations, healthcare providers, and research institutions to raise ovarian cancer awareness and continue helping Americans live longer, healthier lives. And I urge women across the country to talk to their healthcare providers to learn more about this disease. So, we thank you for coming. We thank you for all that you and your group has done every year. And I want to give this proclamation to you. If you want to come up and anyone wants to come down and join us, that's great.
Let's go. To the shore. That's the car.
Everything.
Absolutely.
I'm just smiling with my eyes. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. On behalf of the Allen Dell Women's Club and all the members, all the women of town, thank you so much for raising and helping us raise awareness of this deadly disease. I think that's one in seventy women. And for allowing us to turn the town's teal and put up long signs and, you know, so we really appreciate the health consciousness of this council and help its citizens. So thank, thank you. That's a priority. Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you again. Be well.
Marie, can I have your address? Shares from the records, one thirty-eight Arcadia Road. Thank you. Oh, there it is.
Public comment. This is the first of three opportunities tonight for the public present to comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone at the podium and state your name and address for the record. Not seeing anyone. We'll close the meeting to the public at this time. Agenda review. Um, on our regular session agenda tonight, we'll have a public hearing led by Councilwoman Wizinski to repurpose our two thousand and twenty Burton County Open Space Grant for the playground as well as twenty resolutions and some closed session items. Does anyone have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to just if I may ask about, uh, the, the class three law enforcement officers, because we originally had one.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Is there, did that go through the Highlands Board? How did that?
Yeah, so no, we, we picked up the second one somewhere. Yeah.
We did.
Yep.
And are these two new ones?
No, no, it, it's the same ones. Billy Wright and Dan Kellogg are staying on.
So every year they have to be reappointed?
Yes.
And then the other one was the Local Emergency Planning Committee. Is that different than OEM?
Which, which number?
Twenty-one dash two oh nine.
Uh, state OEM requires a local OEM to put together a committee, and so.
So is that the, is that actually, is it like renamed from OEM to Local Emergency Planning Committee?
Yeah, go ahead.
OEM Director Billitt. Requested to put together four state requirements, it should have been done to get that all.
So he's OEM. I guess I'm just trying to understand the. So that's a person, and this is the committee that goes underneath that. Thank you. I just felt like I'm like I should understand. That's okay. Yeah, he's great. He's absolutely phenomenal. I just wanted to make sure I understood what each of the things were. No, those were my questions.
Okay, good. So we will move to our council reports. Councilman O'Connell, would you like to give yours?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we're working on getting a public safety meeting for the next week or two, and we might be starting up the OEM meeting as well as COVID cases.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, the calls coming in to headquarters, nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine-one-one calls was eleven hundred and nine. Fire calls were one hundred and eighteen, and EMS were two eighty-two. We have a couple of closed session, uh, items we'll take care of later, and that's all.
Thank you so much. Councilman Sasso is not here. Uh, Councilwoman Homan would like to hear your report.
Sure. I don't even know where to begin. Uh, I mean, water, we obviously have a lot going on as far as, thankfully, we did pass the ordinance moving forward with the purchase agreement, but that does not mean that we don't have a lot more work to do. There's exhibits that need to be put together, and the team has really been phenomenal, which is the Water Committee along with our additional advisors in moving this process along. At the same time, uh, the council and, you know, should be aware that we continue to test for the PFAS chemicals over the past three years, and we've looked at our numbers, you know, that while they are still within regulation, the numbers have started to creep up, and if you remember, they're in parts per trillion, so they're very small numbers. But we are, um, looking at putting in some temporary treatments because these, we do not want our, you know, our municipal water to be in violation at any time. So this is something that we are looking at in concert with SUEZ. They've been a great partner, and I think that that's something that's important, you know, for, for everyone to be aware of as we move forward, because, you know, SUEZ is the highest responsible bidder, so they hopefully will become the owner of our municipal water system in the future. And I feel like it's really important that everybody on the council, as well as anybody in the community, understands what a good partner they have been to work with as we look at this particular challenge, which is, you know, just the beginning of what I believe in the world of water will be many to come. So it's a, it's a lot of work, but it's a labor of love, and I just, I am also, um, working with SUEZ on the, kind of the PR campaign, making sure that residents are aware of the referendum question on the ballot. There will be two additional questions that are not Allen, you know, that are, are state specific. Michelle has done a great job in, you know, ensuring that our question was presented and reviewed and has been approved. And now, you know, we need to make sure that we educate the community on this question and the importance that, that it has to the future of Allen Dell and Allen Dell Water. So we are talking with SUEZ about having mailings, because, you know, not everybody is on social media. We are having, uh, public community meetings. I think we've settled on the first community be- meeting being held at the Red Barn on Wednesday, September fifteenth. Subsequently, both SUEZ and the Borough of Allen Dell will be at Allen Dell Day, so that will be, um, a great time for residents to come and ask questions and, you know, learn more about the process. And I think really, you know, ensure that they understand how important that ourselves as elected officials and, you know, those of us that have been on the Water Committee know that this really is the right move to vote yes to sell the system to SUEZ when it comes on the ballot. Um, so yeah, so a lot, a lot of stuff, um, but it's, you know, it's all progressing in the right direction. Sure. Um, so as you saw on the consent agenda, we are switching over the two thousand and twenty Bertram County Open Space Grant that was for Trails to Playground, and that will go into our phase three part of the playground. Currently also on the consent agenda is our phase two part of the playground. I'd like to thank the Allen Dell Moms and other set of Allen Dell Moms who helped us really examine our playground and pick out some great equipment for our youngsters. So that is in the works. Two twenty is still progressing. As we know, the county passed the application, and we're still in the forty-five day waiting period. We've got a lot of documents that we're going through now, and then shortly thereafter, the, um, the property will be demolished. We currently have a meeting on the calendar next week to go over the bids, so the bids have been value engineered. They've been looking at very, very closely, um, calling up the bid people, really trying to get down to the nuts and bolts to see how we can actually get the best price. So that'll be a very, very interesting meeting, um, next Thursday. Um, and then hopefully, if everything goes well, we'll start building in that in two thousand and twenty-two. Crestwood Lake operations are going amazing. Um, the lake is financially healthy. People are really enjoying the lake, especially on these super hot days. We have Labor Day right around the corner, and of course, the Ho's are planning their annual family water festival. Again, it's on September fourth from one to four. There's games, sandcastles, cannibal contests, super, super fun, tons of prizes. Come on, everybody says the Ho's. Holiday observers, sorry. So. There must be something in your past that that's triggering. I don't know. I don't know, Matt. Um, anyway, the playground we just talked about, um, so we're really looking forward to starting the next phase. I think that's going to be a great addition to Crestwood Lake. And last year, nine eleven, um, our twenty year anniversary is this year. So, you know, every year, as you know, Allen Dell takes this ceremony very, very, very seriously. We, um, we don't plan any of these special things. Some towns plan, you know, movie night, et cetera. We, um, are very respectful of this day. And the twenty year anniversary is, um, super, super important to us. So, um, it's really special to me that we actually have all of Allen Dell coming together to make it even more special. So, um, our speaker this year is Rick Albrecht. He, um, has an amazing story. He was there. He also, you know, has just a super story to tell, um, especially with, um, some of the, you know, one of the, uh, residents that we lost that day. Our singer is going to be Sherry Marina, who sung in the past, is also an Allen Dell resident. Uh, we have a poem being read by, um, another Allen Dell resident. Our taps is being played by, uh, what's her name? Granacia, Regina Granacia.
Julia.
Julia, thank you.
Girl Scout.
Who, uh, is great. She actually did it last year as well. Um, Allen Dell resident. The priest is going to be from Allen Dell. We've got our, um, clan of all, which is our back piper that are all from Allen Dell. Of course, the mayor council will be there, all our first responders, and then the holiday observers will also be providing the sound system as they do always, and I heard Matt is in charge of it this year, which is great.
Just put in charge of it today.
Are you going to ring the bell with me too?
Indeed.
And he's also the bell dinger, and then we have Councilwoman Homan, who is going to read our timeline this year, which I'm very grateful for.
Thank you, Amy, for pulling it all together.
It is going to be, yeah, it's going to be beautiful. Um, and we ordered forty flags, and they are going to be lining the streets. Ron, did you pick them up yet? Thank you, Ron, for your help. Uh, tomorrow. Ron is going to be picking them all up, so it is, it's going to be, um, just a beautiful ceremony with everybody. So, um, yep, so it will be wonderful, and, um, I think that's it for me.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes. So, uh, the Finance Committee's been fairly busy since last we met in these chambers. We've had a number of meetings and phone conferences regarding a number of topics, including the capital budget, which we're putting the finishing touches on, should be introducing in the next month or so. We had a few conversations regarding the rent moratorium, which Councilwoman Homan brought to our attention. Also on the agenda this evening is a salary adjustment for Gina Whitback. As you may recall, she, our longtime municipal tax collector, Harold Lawfield, retired, and we've been fortunate to be working with Colleen Nannis, our temporary tax collector. Well, in the interim, Gina's been taking courses, and she just recently passed the test and received her certification as municipal tax collector. So Gina's going to work with Colleen for the rest of the year and then assume the duties in January. So congratulations to Gina on the accomplishment. We're all very happy. She will be our new tax collector. And that's all I got.
Nobody loves paying their taxes, but when I see Gina, she's so kind and nice.
Thank you for that. I will give my report. Um, last Sunday, um, Allen Dell felt the impacts of Hurricane Henry or Henri. For those who took two years of French at Brookside and three years of French at Highlands, thanks to, to Mr. Gilly. Uh, we experienced close to six point two inches of rain from the storm, and as always, the borough was up to the task. We all saw the pictures. It looked like a river. The field beflooded, et cetera. I want to thank our OEM Director Mike Dillon, our DPO, uh, DPW crew, Rich McDowell, Lane Simon, John Pass, Pasquini, and Dan Richards, and all of the emergency services who worked together to ensure our resident safety. A special thanks to Dan Richards, who despite having his usual responsibilities, volunteered to sweep the town in the borough's street, street sweeper. More thank yous for the town's post cleanup. Tom Viscardi, Rich McDowell, entire Crestwood staff who worked to make sure that the lake was open for business on Tuesday. A great job by all. As Matt, as Councilman O'Toole mentioned, uh, some members of our staff here as well. Congratulations to Gina Whitback, our tax clerk, on earning her tax collections certification. Um, and Sam Wright from the library, who is, um, who's a constant there. Um, I see him every Saturday. He will be retiring tomorrow after fifteen years of service at the Lee Memorial Library. I know he doesn't want the fanfare for his retirement. On half, behalf of the mayor and council, we thank you, Sam, for all your dedication to the library and its patrons. And tomorrow at four thirty, from four thirty to five thirty, Patty Durso sent an email. I think there's a clap out for him that he's going to be leaving, so he doesn't want it, and I'm sure he's going to beg us off. But that's, uh, if you can make it tomorrow, four thirty to five thirty. Thank you to our OEM Director Mike Dillon and CFO, Lisa Mayer, for their efforts in submitting reimbursement to FEMA for two thousand and twenty's tropical storm Isaiah. They submitted ninety-two thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy cents in expenses to the borough for that storm. We were just notified that we have been awarded the usual seventy, seventy-five percent, so we will be receiving approximately seventy thousand dollars, which are big dollars for us. Thanks to the both of you. We have some events coming up over the next few weeks that I want to make sure that everyone knows about. Saturday, September eleventh, the BCUA will be holding its Household Hazardous Waste Collection at Camp Gore from nine to nine AM to three PM, rain or shine. Household hazardous waste events offer Bergen County residents a location for the safe and proper disposal of household-generated hazardous waste. The library is holding its Fall Mum Sale. The order deadline is September twenty-first. You can find more information in the August edition of Allen Dell Happenings, and this now marks the beginning of the school year, which always brings pains of anxiety turmoil for me, um, but hopefully not for the parents and the teachers and the kids. So I want to wish everyone, the kids, the parents and the teachers, a very successful school year. And that is the end of my report. Seven fifty-four. We might be able to do some staff reports.
It will be very brief, um, because I do have to confess I was away on vacation for one of the weeks since our last meeting.
And we didn't bother you, did we? Well, water dinner.
I, I also got a little respite from two twenty, two thirty. It was relatively quiet in the scheme of things.
Two thirty's done.
Yeah. Just, I guess, prelude before the next storm, um, but, uh, water not necessarily, uh, uh, in, in the full month, but water's been keeping us very, very busy, and, uh, as Councilwoman Homan said, I, I think in the near future, that will continue to be the case as we move forward. But most of the time, uh, we spent conversing and working with the gentleman who was coughing across the way. Ron and I had a lot of different, uh, personnel issues, uh, contract issues, property maintenance issues, general property issues that we, we had to deal with. Uh, so I would say that was probably the majority of the time since our last meeting. That's about it.
Great. Thank you very much. Michelle?
Thank you. Um, I too was on vacation, so, um, since I've come back, uh, I've just been really focused on this agenda.
No, I get it. It was a month leading up to it, right? There's a lot here. No.
So that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you so much. Is Lisa here? Is she online? No. Okay.
She's on today. Yeah.
Good. Good for her. Ron?
Real quick, I also want to include on to the storm cleanup, uh, the fire department. Again, it really goes under the direction of, uh, OEM Director Dylan. Uh, he kept me informed. People, uh, so good with fire chiefs, couple of rescues, calling some people up. I understand the fire chief to speak to one resident who was walking in some water area.
Where do you see my photos and my presentations? So that's all I have to say.
Those guys that we think, if you guys had FEMA, my, my, yeah. I really have to emphasize, because I've talked to a lot of towns, and FEMA got very, very difficult with, uh, the funding. And for us, even the complete seventy-five percent, uh, and they did, we had, we had numerous meetings. I was on them. I didn't speak, Mike. Listen, Hannibal, they were asking really tough questions, and I knew, I knew to stay quiet, uh, but they did a great job to get that money. I want to, uh, you know, joke around with Ray, but Ray, uh, our attorney got back late Monday, a long trip, and took my phone call at seven AM, you know, next morning, and you guys all know, most borough returns are not taking phone calls from ministry.
And he was probably at his desk at six AM, so he was already.
Again, it just, it shows, right? It shows the commitment that it has to this community.
There's no doubt about that.
Real quick on DPW, uh, Jazz John, who runs the football, uh, and scrimmages next Tuesday, next Wednesday. And break out of work with, he got, so we have a scrimmage, Danny and Davis and Johnny got to feel striped, came out really nice, and, um, the, the deans who run the merchants. They're just great. It's nice organized people.
Yeah, they're all great.
Five or six guys, they got the fields done, helped with the lines.
Awesome.
Wes Maple got done. Three and four get done tomorrow, uh, for small side soccer. So I think it was great for those guys that did a great job. You know, Richard, Richard Dowd goes out, say, Crestwood Lake, you know, saw him, he up there that Tuesday morning, doing manually doing the chlorine on the edges. Recently, he, he scheduled the chlorine truck, met the chlorine truck on Monday morning, shot, basically, you do your pool, had the water perfect by late Monday. Just the extra effort. You hear about, you know, some government employees not going the extra step. That's not the case in Allen Dell, that guy, Richard really stepped up.
Great. Thank you so much. Seven fifty-eight, so, um, we're gonna, um, adjourn the work sessions. So I would request a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved, Tom.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have one minute till we start the regular session.
What do you have?
In front of two twenty, two thirty.
It's, um, actually Borst Parks there, so we allow Borst who's next door to park there, and yeah, so it's an agreement that we.
He, he does this, he cuts the grass and does the storm removal right now. I will wash.
Did you notice the paint job on two thirty? Well, it's funny, because I was like, Dom, they're painting, and he goes, no, they're doing the roof. They're not painting. I'm like, no, they're painting. He's like, uh-uh, Amy, uh, it must be something dripping off from our roof. So I took a picture, send you those. That was not in the budget.
Tyler, are you ready for us?
Yep.
Well, it looks really good.
The time is now eight o'clock, and this is the August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one regular session of the Allen Dell Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us tonight in person at Borough Hall. Welcome to everyone live streaming our meetings via Zoom webinar for those who prefer to watch from elsewhere. At this time, ask the public present to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two opportunities for those present to speak during this meeting, and we will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, um, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
Great, thank you. So. Great, thank you. So we're going to rise for, to salute the flag, but after we do that, I would request that you remain standing for a moment of silence for the events that occurred today in Afghanistan, for the US Marines that selflessly gave their lives.
Thank you very much.
Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Holman.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sasso is absent. Councilman Strouch is, he's actually on the meeting. He is having technical difficulties though, so he can't participate.
Okay.
So he's absent. And Councilwoman Wazinski.
Yeah.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Here. Thank you very much. Public comment on agenda items only. So I'm going to open the floor to the public on agenda items only. Anyone in the present, anyone present wishing to be heard? Not seeing anyone? Resolutions. Tonight, we're holding our public hearing to repurpose our 2020 Bergen County Open Space Grant application and change its scope to the Crestwood Park Playground Area Improvement Project. Amy, do you want to speak to this?
This is our 2020 Bergen County Open Space Grant. Our 2019 grant was also for the playground. There is different phases. The playground is quite large, and we decided that it would be better to repurpose the Trails Grant to a playground. So we are happy to be able to have a Phase Three now to accommodate a lot more activities for the kids. And again, thanks to all the parents who helped us with pulling this whole playground together.
Great. Thank you. Anyone from the public for comments on the grant application? Not seeing anyone. Close the floor to the public. Any council members for comment? Okay, not seeing any. I move to Resolution twenty one dash one nine seven, authorized submission of twenty twenty Bergen County Open Space Trust Fund Memorial Municipal Program Park Improvement Repurpose Application. Crestwood Park Playground Area Improvement Project. I would request a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Holman.
Great. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman, yes. Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso is absent. Councilman Strouch is absent. Councilwoman Wazinski.
Yeah. Yes, sorry.
Thank you. The consent agenda, I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda. So, thank you, Matt. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso is absent. Councilman Strouch is absent. Councilwoman Wazinski.
Yes.
Great. Any unfinished business? No? Any new business? We have done our committee reports. We've done our staff reports. Open the floor to the public on any matter. Not seeing anyone. We'll close the meeting to the public, and we are going to go into closed session. So I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution twenty one dash two one eight, which authorizes the governing body to enter into closed executive session for discussion of acquisition of real property using public funds, personnel matter regarding the police department, and contract negotiations.
So moved, O'Connell.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso and Councilman Strouch are absent. Councilwoman Wazinski.
Yes.
And Mayor, I think it would be fair for the public to indicate an estimated length of time it will be in closed session and to affirm that there'll be no action taken when we come out of the meeting other than to adjourn.
Great, thank you. So we, I would anticipate that we'll be in closed session for maybe thirty to forty minutes. And we will not be doing anything when we come back other than to reconvene to adjourn the meeting. So Walter, we're going to ask you to leave. We're thrilled that you're here, but when we come back, you're not going to be missing anything. We're going to, we're going to say hello and say goodbye.
It was really nice.
Yes. So thank you for your attendance and your interest. Did we, we did the roll call?
Yes.
Okay, good. So. Before we are not going to conduct any other business than we adjourn, I would press a motion to adjourn the regular session. Thank you. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Good night.